Or something. So let's get started.
Recording in progress.
Oh, oh, that is exciting. Okay. Let's start with the minutes. Why don't we?
I just had one thing already sent over to David.
And David also thought that I had done Ben instead of David.
More than the Ben.
Good, good point.
You guys wish.
We're happy to have you. Okay, anybody else? All right, so I'd like to make the motion to move the minutes, adopt the minutes, seconded by Vicki, as amended by Vicki and David. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so I think that's, we're all, you were pointed, right?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, so we're all voting members. Okay, so Mark, thank you for writing your letter and we'll talk about that tonight. But first, I'd like the subcommittee, our much appreciated subcommittee, to report back to the rest of us.
Hold on just a second. Rich has taken some excellent notes and so he sent them to me and I'm going to pass them back around.
Okay, just one page, right?
Just one page.
Okay.
So we were long on questions, short on answers.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, could anybody just... Okay, I guess, why don't we take moments? And I guess I'm gonna say to Tim and Rich, if you think I got it wrong, I'm going to take corrections here. Indeed. Okay, so let me know when you're all done. Is everybody finished that or is there somebody still? So the first thing I'd just ask is what Rich brought up, if there's any added comment from the other two of the sub-
I might add one thing.
Yeah, sure.
I think, I think we thought we were wondering how we would measure the size of a field, you know? How we were gonna measure that. Because David was, David Roberts was saying that now, I guess you measure it as the actual square footage of the panel, not including all the distances between the panels. And we were saying, well, if there's 20 panels and it's a fence around it, you know, is that, is that fence the actual size? So anyway, that was a discussion that we had.
So how to measure?
Not just the panels, but the whole project.
Yeah, so looking at, for the larger ones anyways, if I read it correctly, the Keane one had, like rows in between.
There's spacing in between the panels.
All right, well, that's something we can tackle. But, so how does everybody feel about moving to the size being the governing factor as opposed to how we were handling it before? Yeah, well, let me put it this way. Does it, do people feel uncomfortable with that? Does anybody feel uncomfortable with that? Okay, oh, sorry.
When you say size, you mean production of it?
No.
The physical size.
The physical size.
Rather than the output.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the physical size.
Okay.
Better than the output.
Yeah, so we don't care where it goes or what, we just, all we care about is the actual size of it.
Right, like some other structure.
And I'll just add as a, we'll come back to you later, Mark, but I think that might address a lot of your concerns about, we're not gonna be defining it, I don't think. Well, maybe I'm speaking too soon. But that should simplify things a lot in terms of some of the concerns that I think you've had, but it may not address all of them. Okay, so how do people want to proceed? Why don't, well, I'm not gonna say why don't we. How do people want to proceed?
So, I mean, one of the things that I think we were close to saying was commercial versus onsite. I certainly don't care where the power goes. So if you make up an array and it's for your house, that's cool. If it's for group net metering, because you made a deal with your neighbors, or if we give you the right to put up 10 acres of panels, you wanna sell it to the, you know, to the whatever, I don't think we want to add that layer of regulation in the ordinance. I think you, we want to control what it looks like, how big it is.
I think that's one of the advantages of using the size differentiation really. Then we don't need to really be involved in-
Right, yep. Good. I mean, is there consensus there, Rich? I know you had some concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I have a little bit of a concern because we don't really know where this is gonna go.
When you say where this, you mean where-
Where solar is gonna go in the future.
Right.
I would hate for, I would be concerned if, if a larger outfit was able to come in and because we had very lax rules or didn't have good review, that, you know, that somebody, an entity with big pockets, I mean, let's face it, if, these things are quite large, so it's gonna be, you know, an investment type of group that's gonna come in and do a solar installation that's greater than half an acre or an acre or whatnot. So, you know, it's not any homeowner per se. The homeowner or property owner may sponsor it, but they're gonna be compensated and it's gonna be, you know, a big bucks operation that's gonna come in for the permitting. And so I, I'm a little bit concerned about what we don't know.
Well, I agree, I agree actually with both of you. I mean, I think we're starting at the first level, which is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that, oh, the size differentiation is a good way to go.
Right.
When we get to the bigs, you know, these bigger ones, I think we have to really think carefully about what we, what and how we enable them. And I would have concerns about what could happen as well.
But if we do conditional use, then we would have to write all that up, right?
Right. Well, we would have to establish the standards by which we-
That's gonna be the-
That would be difficult.
The difficult part, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're saying that the small size, which is, I guess we're agreeing that 1,200 square feet or less.
Is that, is that what you guys came up with, 1,200 square feet?
Yeah, because that would give, that would enable at least 15 kilowatts, probably more than 15.
It's more, I would say. But I remember we were talking about, what was it?
A thousand, a thousand, a thousand square feet gave like 10 to 15 kilowatts.
In that range?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, that's, those are the ballpark numbers.
Okay.
So 1,200.
At one point, wasn't it like the size of a garage, which was 400 square feet, was?
That was six to seven.
That was six to seven. That was six to seven, so it's, okay, so three times that could be 18 to 21.
Yeah, you know, squishy numbers, but yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but it, I mean, my initial concern when we started this was that we set the rules so tight-
Too tight.
That you couldn't do your own, you couldn't even do your own pump. That's not a problem.
Yeah. So, so we need, I mean, so let's say we're starting with a provisional number of 1,200 and we can, that's changeable if we want. But you guys came up with 1,200, why don't we provisionally start with 1,200? Is there, are there any comments about the 1,200? Do people feel it's too little, too much, or just right?
How many kilowatts were you estimating for 1,200?
Uh, let's see, the numbers that I computed, that I guesstimated were 1,000 square feet, 750 to 1,000 square feet would give 10 to 15 kilowatts. So, but that's from memory and if you have better numbers, I'll dig out what I wrote.
Yeah, no, I don't know if those are good or not, but that number, I mean, 15 kilowatts to me seems, I mean, that's a big residential system, but, you know, there are folks here in line that already have residential systems larger than 15 kilowatts and that's before we consider electric vehicles or, you know, heat pump heating and that kind of thing.
Okay, well, we're gonna, regardless, there's gonna be a cutoff point from the sounds of it, where we're gonna go from the small, it's not like if it's larger, it's gonna be disallowed. There'll just be more regulation of it, but there's gonna have to be a cutoff point. And it's a balance between being generous in that, in that first, small, the small arrays and then when I guess if we're doing it the same way, you know, the medium arrays and then the large arrays.
So, John, there's two data points.
Yeah.
I think, no, I know Keane is 2,000.
Right.
Of the limit of the small.
Right.
And Rich, did you say that Lebanon was 15?
Lebanon's is 15.
Yeah.
100 square feet.
So I'd be willing to, you know, 1500 to get up to four.
Well, I guess my, I mean, I think, what did you guys come up with, 1,200? I think 1,200 is generous to basically have, you know, no oversight other than-
Than lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
Because that's 30 by 40.
Because, because there's a certain point where there's no oversight and if you're, I know this is with a large thing, like what's going on in Norway, which that's, that's a large array. But, you know, there's a tipping point to where we're enabling stuff that's gonna cause problems between neighbors. And of course, that's inevitable, but I think we should feel comfortable that where that cutoff point is a nice balance between being generous to there not being oversight and being mindful of the doors we may be opening to a lot of controversy.
Right.
Um, just to drill down on the numbers, I just did a quick internet search and it looks like, how much watt did you get per square foot of solar panel is a function of the solar panel efficiency? At the lower end of the spectrum that this site is giving me, which is about 15%, 1,200, that gives you about 14 watts per square foot. And at that number, you get, a 1,200 square foot figure would give you about 16,800 watts.
Right, right in that number, yeah. Thank you.
First there again, that depends how we measure the field too.
Again, if you're just measuring it specifically just panel size.
Right. But if you don't measure it that way, then it'll change.
That'll make it a lot smaller. Right. So, I mean, we need to determine how we would measure it and we could even make distinctions that, I don't know, maybe we should just say consistent, but we could make distinctions that on the small, the small form is just measuring the panels. On the larger ones, I mean, the largest, the large ones, I think we need to think about that.
Right, oh, interesting. So the small, you'd measure the drip, the drip edge, whatever the angle is, this is?
I'm suggesting it as an option.
Perhaps a suggestion or an off. And in a, in a medium, it's from the limit-
I wasn't thinking, I hadn't actually thought about, I'm thinking about the large ones where we may, we may want to do what Keane does, where they, you know, when it's that much coverage, they're making provisions for the well-being of the land underneath.
Right. But I think I'm agreeing with you, so that small, up to whatever number we pick, we measure the drip edge.
It's a possibility.
The larger, the medium and the large, we talk about the fenced area or something like that because a medium goes up to an acre of solar panels.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that I struggle with, with the small, or little, whatever we're calling it, is I want it, I want it to be easy, I want it to be generous. And I want to be careful at the high end of the, how much we're packing in there. At a certain point, on the high end, I start to get concerned about how that's gonna be with neighbors, with, you know, stuff like that.
So 1,200 square feet is 30 by 40?
So that's sort of, that's, I don't know why I'm remembering that figure, but 400 square feet is a garage. So that, I think I'm remembering it because it's an easy way to think of something. So you're having three garages where people have that lot, lot coverage available. I don't know how people feel about that.
We have, we have very restrictive lot coverage. I mean, we only allow 2% on the, in the rural.
Yeah, but this isn't gonna generally even come into play for larger lots, you know, the-
Right. Well, what I'm saying is, the lot coverage is, we don't allow people to occupy very much space on their parcel. You know, 98% of the parcel is open space, if you will. So if they have the lot coverage available, they're still not gonna be covering more than 98, they're more than 2% of the parcel. So, so I think-
Think that's okay.
We're safe.
Okay, so, so-
Being generous.
So let's start with this. The small ones, again provisionally, 1,200, is everybody comfortable with 1,200?
If you went to 15, that gives people 20 kilowatts, which is-
You feel better with 15?
I would, I mean, it's-
I would rather go up to 10.
Okay, so let's say 1,500 provisionally. And how, so I guess it'd be better if, well, I-
20,000 kilowatts?
It would, by my math, using the numbers on this website, that would give you 21. So I was just thinking if I was building a solar backup system for my house, you know, my generator's a 20 kW, I don't know if it's comparable in terms of what you need.
Right, okay.
But it depends on how you're measuring it though. If you're measuring it at the angle, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more than 20 kilowatts in that case, right?
Yeah, I think the website I was looking at was just looking at square foot of solar panel space, yeah.
Right, so that would be a horizontal, you're saying it would be a horizontal drip where the-
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the number that David calculated is based on having the panel flat on the ground, but in most cases, it's gonna be like, it's gonna be at an angle and so the area occupied by the panel is gonna be smaller than-
Right.
So you could get, so you could get more panels.
That's great.
All right, so are we saying that 1,500 every, is everybody comfortable? Is anybody not comfortable with 1,500?
Well, I personally think 1200 is plenty. I mean, that's a big air.
I agree, I mean, I think it's plenty.
Probably 15, anyway.
I mean, that's four, that's almost four garages.
It's bigger than my house.
Yeah.
I mean, my total square footage of my house is less than 1,100.
Yeah.
But I'm happy with that because of the power that could be generated for somebody and I don't think it should be an issue.
It's not a question of, it's a question of where we're gonna draw the line to the next thing. So, you're comfortable with it, you're comfortable with it?
Yep.
I'd give it one.
And I like the fact that we're measuring like that and not flat.
Rich, how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in the 12 to 1,500 square feet. I mean, I think, you know, we could, I didn't bring my other notes that I had done some calculating on, but, you know, I think, I just got a quote from SolarFleck and they're using 380 watt panels now. But I think, you know, if we're looking for, I call it your solar, your energy budget and, you know, if you're using six to eight kilowatts for heat and lights and then maybe three or four kilowatts per car, I think those are some numbers that, that-
Yeah, for the car, it seemed like, yeah, three to four kilowatts.
That would get you about 15,000 miles. And if you had two or three cars, then, you know, you're up around 20 kilowatts. And I think that seems like a reasonable budget. So if we back into the square footage, whatever it is, whether it's 12 or 15.
Well, yeah, but now is where the rubber meets the road, so.
That would be our basis.
Yeah, 12 to 15, but we gotta choose one, so.
Can I ask a question? Is there a standard size for panels right now?
So for many years, the panel size stayed more or less the same, but now they're starting to move towards what they say, what they call larger format panels. So it varies.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is would it make sense to, if there is a standard size, make sense to have the number of multiple of that size?
So how would that work?
If your panel, let's just say they're four by four, so eight square feet, then you're, you would want your sizes to be-
16.
16.
Six, I'm sorry.
The other eight.
You would want your number to be a multiple of that so that you can, you know, it-
Mark is saying that it's not-
They're still at an angle.
And it's also that-
Still at an angle, but try to be out of the way of, it seems to me, I'll use this just as an example, the state of Vermont put in a magazine size limit on handguns. And they put in a size that is very, or is not a standard size. Then they limited 15 rounds for most magazines or 17. So instead of being able to have a 15 round, the manufacturers don't make that, so you're down to a 10, just because of the number that they picked. So what I'm thinking is, you know, making it something that you're not saying, oh, look at this, we're giving you a generous number, but you're gonna have to-
How's that, how can we do that when?
Well, that's why I don't know.
Yes, there's a variety of sizes and we're dealing with a tilt.
Plus the panels, I mean, change.
Right, but, you know, just to me, you know, making it a number that's a multiple.
Yeah, that feels like premature optimization, like, we don't know where things are going. There's a new large format that's a different size. I'm comfortable just saying the 1,500 and, you know, if you can generate-
All right, well, you're comfortable with that, Rich? What do you want?
I, I mean, I, I can go with 1,500, that's fine.
Okay.
Since we're bidding here, is there anybody who'd like 2,000 as Keane does?
I would support 2,000. I mean, you know, Keane started at 2,000 and we like everything else, like many of the things that they did.
No, I think this is a very generous for no oversight. Keane's a much bigger-
Just asking, just asking.
No, it's worth trying.
Consensus and I, yeah, I, yeah, I don't have a problem personally with 2,000, but, but just wanted to put it out there in that we've gotten to 15, so.
All right, anybody want, 3,000? I hear 3,000.
Or 16.
I guess the way I look at it is that if somebody's gonna be complaining about 1,200, another 300 feet isn't gonna matter, because they're gonna complain anyway. You know, whether it's 1,200 or 1,500 feet, the neighbor's not gonna want it. So it doesn't really matter whether we have 12 or 15 hundred, probably.
So how many neighbors really don't want this?
Oh, I'm sure they're gonna say so, oh, yeah.
Really? Because I, I-
I mean, if somebody's view share or something, it's gonna be a huge issue.
There's gonna be a problem, but anyway, that's not really what, you're saying, you're saying if there's 12, I think what Tim is saying is that if it's 1,200 or 1,500, if somebody's gonna complain at 1,200 and 1,500 is gonna make it.
It's gonna be the same.
It sounds like we're at 1,500.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's there. And how do we want to, do we want to measure, let's forget about the medium right now. Let's, because I'm not really sure where we are with the medium, but I think the real obvious things are the small and the large. Do we want to be measuring the small and the large the same way?
Well, if you adopt different measurement systems for different categories, then you create at least the theoretical possibility of a gap.
Yep.
Right, okay.
So-
And confusion.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, part of it is, I think we asked the question, do we think that the size larger than small would have a fence around it? Because if it did have a fence, then, then it's pretty easy to say, if you're up to, we just said 1,500, measured the way, I think we're talking about measuring it, the drip edge, you're cool. It's easy, just put it in, talk to Dave, it'll be done. If you're bigger than the 1,500, we're gonna measure the perimeter, either the perimeter of all the arrays or maybe even the fenced area.
You mean, that's how we would measure?
Let's see, I don't, I'm not in support of measuring the fenced area because I believe that we are managing our lot coverage in order to retain impervious surface. And the area, you know, if they were to pave in between, you know, rows of arrays, then yes, but if it's brown and pervious, then I don't really support that because, you know, you're gonna have grass or, you know, they like to paint a picture that people can have animals- have animals grazing, or, you know, you can do shade grown, um, coffee beans underneath your solar panels, or whatever, but, um, you know, so, I, I, I'm not, not supportive of that, the area and the fence idea, I just think straightforward, just like your shed, you know, it takes up, you know, this much impervious, so that's where I am on that.
I'm thinking, maybe that should be addressed in the conditional use, cause somebody might wanna pave it, or somebody might wanna.
Well, if they wanna pave it, then, then we've got, like, uh, impervious surface, which would count towards your lot coverage, so that's already covered, we don't have to.
We don't think they gravel, you know, hard pack, made it like a normal, the whole thing.
I don't know how David deals with, with, uh, I don't think hard packs are regulated, so.
No, it's not, well, anyway, that might be addressed in.
So, uh, Keane has, um, for ones that need conditional use permit, and theirs, that's the medium and the large, the landscape, uh, where is it? Uh, now I've lost it. Okay, existing site conditions, including the, uh, proposed site conditions, including the, um, footprint, these are, these are the requirements of what you gotta show, limits of any land clearing or grading requirement for the installation operation, as well as any erosion, it's like a site plan review, a landscape plan that includes location of existing vegetation to be preserved, details on location dimension, um, drainage, elevation, detailing potential significant glare, estimates on any equipment noise on the site, and then planning board may impose conditions on the solar energy system, uh, they conclude, it gives them a lot of leeway, basically, for the planning board. And then, it's, they also have a requirement, all on-site power, this is for the large stuff, I think, uh, has to be buried, except where it's not possible, um, lighting issues, perimeter security, fencing shall have a maximum height of eight feet, and they have a clearing of, of existing trees and vegetation shall be, be limited to what is necessary for the installation, uh, the design of the ground-mounted solar energy systems shall include sufficient distance, which at a minimum, shall be the width of a solar, single solar collector panel between rows of solar collector panels, to allow for capture of rainfall and growth of vegetation, so I guess, you know, that's something we need to think about, particularly that last one.
Um, in this New Hampshire model, they talk about, um, the solar land coverage, it's the land area that encompasses all components of the solar collection system, including the not limited to the mounting equipment panels and ancillary components of the system, this definition does not include access roads or fencing, so, that, that makes sense to me.
So, what does that mean?
It means that, you know, like, things that look like transformers or boxes with equipment, um, get counted in, um, the road to it doesn't count, and.
Even, even if the road is paved?
Well, in, in this, you know, this state model, it, that's what they say.
But is that something you'd be comfortable with, even if the road is paved?
Um, do driveways count as?
Depends on the district.
Okay, so I would leave it just the same.
Commercial, uh, or the, yeah, commercial, uh, line center and on common, the, um, driveways are included as part of the lot coverage, and all the other districts, they are not, unless they are a commercial driveway.
Okay, well, I don't wanna get into commercial, you know, we're doing sizing.
Well, no, I, I'm.
So, I think, I think, I think that's the point, though, is, is, let's say, somebody's doing a very large array, um, we, we haven't talked about the limit to how big it could be, but let's say it's, it's a large array, and, so they wanna, you know, they wanna make their access easy, and they put in paved roads.
I mean, there'd be one paved road, it's not gonna, you know, I don't, roads are expensive to build, and unless you're gonna use it, I mean, you need it to get your equipment, and you're getting your equipment out, you know, that's what you need it for, they don't, people aren't gonna maintain and.
All right, so, you, you're, you're fine with that?
As far as everything I've ever seen for, um, utilities, for cell towers and the, the solar panel systems I've looked at, all the access roads are dirt roads, they don't, um, they may improve them to, you know, fill in some.
So, nobody feels like that's much of a concern?
But I, I don't think they're gonna pave them, it just, it's an added cost that I can't see a benefit.
Okay, if people are comfortable with that, so be it, um, what about, uh, how large a, a large array can be?
Well, this one, you, uh.
Has up to twenty acres.
That's.
Listen, that's the max.
The max.
Yeah, well, that's what we're talking about.
Not the max.
That's like Keane has, I don't know.
So, this one starts at five for large.
This is the state model?
Yeah, yeah, at large, commercial solar, there's a community solar, which goes up to one acre of solar coverage, residential, less than five hundred square feet, so they do five hundred, up to an acre is the community and above, um, what, large, I don't know, here's your gap situation, it'd be, between one acre and five, there isn't any, you know, you know, I'm sure it's kind of addressed, but it's not easily addressed, five acres.
Let me ask this, we have the twenty-six thousand limit per lot, which is about a half acre, you know, right around a half acre, um, do we want anything larger than a half an acre?
Depends where it is.
Well, I mean, I mean, that, that's the point, is, that's what we have to deal with.
Right.
Yeah.
What would be a, a typical size of a, you know, one of the big solar farms that we see in this area?
They have one here, um, the, two hundred fifty kilowatt array would be eight hundred and thirty-three panels with a capacity of three hundred watts each, and, uh, that would take up about an acre, so two hundred fifty kilowatts, and then larger weight, one megawatt would be four acres, five megawatts would be twenty acres, ten megawatts, forty acres, thirty megawatts, one hundred and twenty acres.
I got behind Ricky, one megawatt, your, your megawatt is.
Can you just say?
So, uh, getting back to what Rich was, uh, Rich Mengy was talking about at the beginning, there's a lot of land, um, available in line, um, what limit do we wanna have?
You know, I think, you know, uh, Keane suggests twenty acres, um, is the, the max of a large system.
I mean, that's huge.
That's, that's, that's like way too big for me.
Ricky, how, how big is Hanovers that they just put in?
I don't know, but I can, I can, I actually don't have my phone, so I can't look it up, so, um, I don't know, it's.
We have, we have somebody with, we have a, a phone person right there.
Well, I can, you know, tell me where it is, I can.
Uh, if you look under Hanover solar array, it's probably under that, cause it, it made, you know, Julia got citizen of the year for clean energy, and, you know, it's probably in, in there, but.
Where is that?
It's up by the, uh, water treatment plant, up by O'Kill, you know, where the reservoir is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Two adjacent ground-mounted arrays consisting of more than four thousand panels, you know, four thousand five hundred and sixty panels will generate over two million, uh, kilowatt hours of clean energy.
So, uh, can we multiply that by how big, you know, an average panel is?
Well, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's at one point two seven megawatts of solar arrays.
Yeah, so, it's about five acres, one point two five, uh, megawatts?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'd be about five acres, so.
Yeah, that's what, you know, using this scale.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that, that, that's the same.
Yeah.
You know, and if somebody wanted to put it in, um, I think it's like, to the good of the environment, to the good of the, um, whatever, I think we have a right to insist what it looks like where it's sited, it, you know, clearly can't be on a common or anything like that, so, um, but I think that's, you know, Keane says twenty acres, we'd have to do something about lot coverage, because you can't insist that somebody have a, what, twelve hundred acre parcel, um, but if they, you know, if they.
Well, basically, I mean, we, we could say that, that the large ones are, um, exempt from, from lot coverage, but, but, uh, before we, we go down that road, I think we really need to think about how, what's, what's an appropriately large, uh, size for line?
What if, um, what if one of the local farmers came in and said, this farming business is for the birds, I wanna make a solar farm?
I think that's what the question is, is how, it, it's not, it's not only a question of what somebody might wanna do on their land, it's a question of policy for the town, and that's what I'm asking the board, is what is, what is everybody's comfort level in terms of, of size?
Yeah, I mean, I think, there again, it depends where it is, I mean, if it was twenty acres somewhere, we couldn't see it from a road, really, and it wasn't on a ridgeline and all that stuff, it would be fine, but, you know, it really depends where we go.
I mean, twenty acres is.
Twenty acres is really big, um, you know, I, I like, you know, five acres sounds like a lot to me, and it sounds.
Five acres sounds like a lot to me, too.
And, you know, if, maybe we got a five acre installation, and everybody loves it, you know, and we go, oh, you know, they, and we can always change this, but it's, that, that sounds generous, five acres.
Yeah.
It sounds good, no.
How does everybody feel about that?
That's a lot of, uh.
That's a ton.
That's a lot of.
That's a lot, a lot of money, too.
It is.
I mean, that's a major.
Yeah, but that's, you know, that's certainly not inconceivable, I mean, people, people are, are, uh, out of town, um, organizations buy up rentals, and, and increasingly, I think that, you know, given the state of the world, that available land will, will be very attractive to investment.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people in town who are land-rich and, um, you know, some of the older families, and, um, having the rental income from renting their property for solar
Of course.
is, uh, I think would be very effective.
I, I don't think that, I think we have to think, um, that, we can't assume, oh, no, nobody's gonna do this, I mean, on the one hand, we.
People's already got it.
And on, on the other hand, we want, you know, we're, we're coming from the starting point of we wanna be, uh, positive about this, unfortunately with that, we, we also have to think about limits, so, you're comfortable with five acres?
Five acres, but I, you know, what I'm very uncomfortable at using is egg soil, and, um, so, you know, the whole idea of a, you know, farm field, all of a sudden having a solar array of five acres put into it, makes me uncomfortable.
But if, under current zoning.
Yep.
A, a farm field can use up to twenty-five percent, so it's not a question of, oh, you can't put this on a farm field.
Yep.
You can, if you have a hundred acres, you can cover twenty-five acres.
Yep.
You know, if, if it was allowed.
Right.
So, I don't think that that's really gonna be a problem.
Okay, well, this was a question here, and you, it seemed like this, or subcommittee was like, oh, it's not a good deal, but I, I.
Which is, where's that?
Well, just in the, the overly district, so, um, you know, I.
I think you had brought up in the meeting is, it's something that needs to be a discussion item that really needs to be discussed.
Right, it, it was not, just not a problem, it was.
Oh, okay.
It was, I think, I think, Tim, you said that solar panels are a little lighter on the ground than an actual structure with a basement or a concrete pad, and.
Yeah, what I was, yeah, Mickey, it's interesting, cause I'm, I'm the one that is so protective of agricultural soil, but I'm thinking that, when you put up solar panels, as long as there's not paving and all that stuff, if they ever are needed, or if the, the ground, the land is more valuable as farmland, they can be removed fairly easily, as opposed to buildings and stuff, I mean, that's what I.
Well, I, 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 I mean, I've got a couple of arrays, and those are big holes, and they poured a lot of concrete with galvanized, um, you know, ivies, oh, yeah, that's, that's what they put them on.
Yeah, I think you're being a.
I don't think, I don't think it's light on at all.
You know, if you build them on la, on landfills, and they put these humongous concrete, you know, the.
And I, and I think that goes back to what Hanover did, I mean, where did Hanover put their five acre array?
Put it in a wetland.
They put it on a wetland, really? Really?
They also took municipal exemption, so that it wasn't reviewed locally, um, there was no site plan review, and there was no local zoning review either, so I gotta say, this was like a, um, you know.
Railroad, railroad is true.
Well, it's, it didn't, you know, it wasn't like a railroad that way, it just, they did the municipal exemption, didn't get reviewed locally, so we had the state alteration of terrain, um, you know, for the wetlands impacts, and, and, uh, so that's how that was.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Which would be different if it was a private person, they would still be subject to our local review, so.
Right, so, well, I'm, I'm concerned about agricultural soils, but, you know, going by how we've been working on this, which is, we're basically keeping.
Feel like a structure.
A structure, so, so you have your, you have a hundred acres, or you have fifty acre, well, say we have the five acre limit, you have, um, what's four, four times, a twenty acre farm field, you have five acres of farm field that you, you can theoretically cover, so, uh, I don't think it's either or, it's simply that.
Yep.
Now, John.
You can go on farm fields, but you're still within that, you're still u, u, under the zoning, yeah.
Now, I, I, I think we also have to take into consideration how we're measuring the panels again, too, because, you know, my, I have two arrays, and, you know, there, there's as much space in between the panels or more than there is, uh, you know, that, that, the foot, actual footprint of the panels, so, when we start saying however much acreage, you're gonna lose at least half, again, as much.
Yep. So, would be like a ten acre development site for a five acre solar installation is what you're, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that does, yeah, I mean, that's why.
So, so we have to, I, I think we gotta think about that, because actually, we might end up ha, losing fifty percent of the land.
Well, but if.
Well, no, if the limit.
Unless you say, okay, where, whatever you have fenced in is.
Well, that, that's what I was getting at before, because, uh, for people who are doing the smaller arrays, you know, we're, I always, I, my sense is, it's like, yeah, okay, go for it.
Right.
But when you get into the, the larger arrays, there start to be concerns about, you know, packing it in there, not having space in between, um, and, uh, that type of stuff, so, that's why I was thinking, well, do, do we wanna have, your point was good, which is, it starts to get confusing, but maybe we have two different ways of measuring, one for, for the small, and, uh, people can do what they want there, but with a large one, we may have requirements where you do need to have some space in between, or more space in between.
I think the physics of it are gonna say, that if you got a panel like this, you can't put the next panel, um, any too close to it because of the shade, so you have to make it so that the bottom of this next, the bottom of the next panel is not shaded.
So, so it would take care of itself.
So, that'll automatically take care of. That'll automatically take care of itself, there'd be a fair amount of space.
So. What's that?
Mark was.
Oh.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna make the exact point that Rich just made.
Okay.
But I guess one other thing, this idea of measuring things differently between smaller and larger systems, I think you're gonna end up with maybe a perverse situation where someone with the smaller, that qualifies for the smaller designation can actually put in more capacity than someone with a larger, larger system, because.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely see the, the problem in having two different standards.
And, and actually, I don't know the answer to this, I'm sort of embarrassed. One of the things they say is, well, we'll pick the small one, solar energy system, blah, 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 and occupies two thousand square feet of solar footprint or less. And I couldn't find the definition of a solar footprint.
I think that comes from solar land coverage is probably, is maybe what the states.
Yeah, and, and.
So, I mean, that, that might be what they're talking about.
And.
Well, I talked to the guy in Keen that actually reviews the plans, and he just measures the panel size, so he doesn't care about the slope or anything, you know, if they're three by five foot panels, then.
They're fifteen square feet.
They're fifteen square feet.
Huh.
And.
So, so he's not taking into consideration any space in between?
No.
Okay. I mean, that's an easy measure.
It, it's a very easy measure, but I think it, we have to be cognizant of what we're doing with our ag land or, or our building footprints if it, if it, if it's gonna be counted.
Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think Rich may have just said what I was gonna say, but, you know, if, if you start measuring the panel, just, you know, three by five is fifteen, then you have to do the same thing with like a, a roof, right? I mean, if you're gonna treat these things as structures, it seems like you need to apply the same types of rules to them. In other words, a roof has a slope to it, too, but I think you're counting the plan view of it as opposed to the actual.
Right, I don't, I don't look at the roof and say, look at the square foot of the, the two sides of the roof and say that's your building footprint, I look at what is on the ground itself.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, yeah, right. I think that's.
But that's not how they're measuring the solar panels.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, so how are they measuring? It's different, I, I thought that that is how they're measuring.
No, 'cause the solar panels are at an angle.
Right.
So the, the footprint of the solar panel is less than the square footage of the solar panel.
Right.
And they're just measuring the square footage.
And they're just measuring the square footage.
And they're not taking into account the tilt, they're just.
Oh, I see, I see.
Right.
And, and Rich, did I hear you right, that they're just, when they talk about solar footprint, they're just talking about the three by five panel or whatever, the square area of the panel.
That's what he was telling us, yeah.
And that's why, and that's why they're making the, that, that term of art, solar footprint, as opposed to its footprint, which would change depending on the angle and all.
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what they're likely doing?
I, I think that's likely what they're doing, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, I'd certainly accept that, because it's easy. There's bumpy bump, square feet of solar panels, you look at the specs, you come up with that number. And, and maybe we wanna look at the fifteen hundred square feet again and make sure we're still happy with that.
I mean, you could look at, uh, 'cause, excuse me, what they're saying, are they looking at the outside structure of the racks, or is it saying, okay, we're just gonna look at the panels, not include any of the other?
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't get into too much detail, but it was just, you know.
It would be a very easy calculation, you know, that way you don't worry about the, the racks that they're on, you're just saying, we're gonna look at just, you have X number of panels, they're X by Y, and that's how much footprint you're, you're gonna be charged.
So then you're saying, you're saying we're gonna do away with our seventy percent.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, that seems to be what they're.
Yeah.
That's just how that community is saying.
You know, again, doesn't matter to me at all how it's done, I just wanna know how it's done.
It's, it's up to the board, how it's done.
Well, I think that things like, you know, if you have to have all, you know, controlled building, that that should count.
Yep, well, I think any type of pad you put down for any type of hardware, you know, you have to have inverters, you have to have, you know, cooling equipments, in a lot of cases, all that needs to be accounted for.
Would count, yes, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, but I don't know if, you know, when you get into the, the panels themselves, do you wanna just count the panels, or are you going to be counting the, the racks that they sit on, if they extend beyond the, the edge of the panel, you know, that's why, you know, a drip edge, great, good clean, I know what that is.
Right, although the pads could stick out from the drip edge and this and that, and, I mean, the, the beauty of using the actual square footage of the panel is, it's easily computed, and we all know that when you prop it up, it's got some structure underneath it, and it's got some pads and, and all, but the, 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 the installers, the designers are gonna work hard to minimize those, because they don't wanna pay for them. So they'll be as big as they are, they need to be.
And, yeah, but like you said, to me, you know, it's a nice, easy number.
Yep.
And, you know, if they're, if they spill a little bit of concrete, and the pad is just a little bit bigger than, you know, so be it, it's not.
Right, yeah.
You know, the, we're not out there trying to nickel and dime the, the sizes, so here's the size of the, your panels, that's what you're using.
Yep.
That's, that, you know, to me, that's a good, clean, easy way, but again, that's, you know, as long as it's defined, that's all I care about.
Right. All right, so what do people think? I mean, we wanna have, what we said is, we wanna have some form of a draft, I guess it doesn't have to be, you know, perfect, but at least, if not, we said draft, but if it, if we can get an outline together to, you know, be available at town meetings, so we can get feedback, that would be good.
Yep.
So, I, I think more realistically, given the time constraints, we'll have an outline. And we can say, if we're not exactly clear, between, you know, between this and that range.
Yep, yep, I mean, honestly, putting it into regulation format makes a lot of people's eyes glaze over. It's a bullet point thing, saying.
And, and narrated, yeah.
Right, you know, up to this, it's just permitted.
So why don't, why don't we think of it as an outline, because we're not gonna get it.
Yep.
Get it nailed down in that way.
So, is, is everyone comfortable with the five acres, or is that too big?
I don't know, you know, first of all, it, I'm having a hard time, I think everybody's having a hard time getting their head around, well, what is it that's gonna actually be measured, how is it gonna be measured? Are, on the larger arrays, are we gonna require what Keen does, you know, the?
Well, I mean, maybe that's, so if we had one acre, would that be too small?
Or an acre?
Yeah.
When we're talking about acres, what are we, acres of what, is that the surface area of the solar panels?
Four, three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
No, no, I understand that, but what?
Panel plus transformer boxes, or control panel boxes.
Well, I think that David's question is to the point, we haven't really established how.
No, 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 we haven't, but.
I mean, that's, that's what we need to do.
Those things need to be.
'Cause if we just measure the panels, then you, the actual area that it could take up could be a half again as much, or more.
It could be, but you know what, I, I'm not that concerned about that, it's, you know, it's structured.
You, you guys who are, and, guys and gal,
Yep.
Who know more about this than me.
Well, I don't.
Like, I'm, I'm looking at, at this thing in Norwich where they have, how many is it, I think five, yeah, five hundred kilowatt solar array. How, how much land would that take up? Roughly, I mean, I know it's.
Five hundred kilowatts would be two acres?
About two acres, yeah.
Two acres.
Yeah, yeah, using our little commons legal.
Okay. So that's about two, two acres.
Yep.
For five hundred watts. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think, on, on the high end, five acres is, is, is plenty. Because even if you, even if we're measuring it in a way that means that's gonna be less, I mean, you're gonna get a five, you know, you can easily get a five hundred kilowatt array there.
Well, five, five acres would give you a megawatt and a quarter.
Right.
I mean, that'd be a lot.
That's a lot.
That, that would be great, that would be terrific, yeah.
That's why I can't oversize it.
So, five, five acre, I mean, if I ask, you know, is that, am I comfortable with that, I, I, I don't know the answer, I'd need to think about it some more, but that seems like plenty.
Question that I should ask is, when you start getting into these larger systems, you will need some sort of infrastructure to get the power out to the users. And we certainly know that if you go into the, the back areas of the town where there are, where you have the majority of the land, you're, you don't have that power infrastructure, so you're going to end up putting in.
That's the impact, is the roads are all gonna change, because you have three phase power, when three phase went up Dorchester Road, it was a huge change.
Yep.
And I did not, I lived on the corner there, where Maureen and, Maureen Byrne lives now, and I was not happy about that. And I was like one of the last holdouts, 'cause I didn't wanna see that coming up the road.
Vicky, so what change did you see?
Uh, trees got cut back, and, and they have big, heavy power lines that, you know, are not residential, they definitely, you know, and I was just, you know, fun, you know, supply the skiway.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, but it, it makes a difference.
Yeah, visually.
You know, that, so I think that's what people are gonna have a hard time with, and that's not gonna be, that's up to the, the select board with the poll licensing.
Yeah, so, but it's, right now, this is in our court.
Right.
And, and one of, you know, like, this is, this is what we need to think about, like in Norwich, they had, this is what we're, we're, the town is probably gonna face at some point, line. They have this five acre, five hundred kilowatt thing going up, and the neighbors are, you know, really unhappy. So, it, and they're saying because of the, you know, where it is in town, and blah, 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 so when, you know, when we're talking about the mountain forest district.
I'm not saying that's an appropriate place.
It may not be an appropriate place.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what, one of the things that we talked about on Monday was, there's a lot of space out there. And there is three, three phase power.
Up to the skiway.
Up to the skiway, so maybe, you know, we're not making any recommendations, but it might even be feasible to do that, 'cause there is a lot of space there.
Well, I guess, you know, the thing, you know, in our master plan and everything, a, a, a large issue is, and the reason there's a mountain and forest district, is because it's extremely important. I mean, to me, biodiversity is extremely important in terms of the, the climate. And, you know, I, I, there was this article in the, in the Valley News that said that solar panels are seventy times the return on an acre of, of forest, and, and, you know, by, by somebody from the solar company, and I don't, I don't believe that.
In terms of what?
That, that if you, if you cut down a forest and, and put up, you know, cut down a one acre forest and, and put up an acre of solar panels, it's seventy times more carbon efficient. And it's just not, I mean, I, I'm not.
Ridiculous.
I'm not buying that, so, I mean, I, I don't, I, I don't wanna see.
That's different than biodiversity, so.
It's not, and not to me, it's not.
Well, it is to me, because there's nothing living there after you cut down the forest.
But that's the point, then, no, I'm saying, what, what, the issue was, if you cut down an acre of forest.
Yep.
That, and put up an acre of
Solar panels.
Solar panels, there's a net gain seventy times over there having been.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no, so, so, I mean, the, I haven't read this article, so, but what I think they're saying is, that the, thank you, what they're saying is that, that the carbon dioxide generated by the forest that sits there is X.
Used by the forest.
Used by the forest.
Used by the forest.
No, I'm sorry, consumed by the forest, yeah, right, thank you, I had it back. The carbon capture of the forest.
Right, the carbon capture of the forest is X.
Yeah.
If you generate the same amount, the same area
Right, that's what he's saying.
You save all.
But I don't believe it's remotely seventy percent.
Well, you know, you just, that's, that's, that's not the whole equation.
No, it's not.
I agree.
You know, you have, you have to get components from the Congo, you have to transport it.
Yeah, they're slitting labor on the kids.
And, and the thing about, about far, this is getting back to the mountain forest district. Matt, you don't have to do anything to a forest, it's, it's there.
It's true, right.
It's existent, it's capturing carbon.
And it's making oxygen for us.
Yeah, so, when it comes to the mountain forest district, I think we need to think very carefully about incentivizing people to cut down acres of forest.
I, I, I don't think, I don't believe that's an appropriate location, so the skiway district is near the east line district, and, and that's an edge district, which is lousy land for development, and, you know, and there's a lot of trees there, but, I mean, maybe that's the furthest east we go. And remember, the mountain forest, you know, spreads even more south.
Right.
So.
So, and here's another question, are, are there, are there sites in town that, that people could identify as really great sites for larger arrays?
Did the energy committee look at that at all?
Only for land that's owned by the town, so there's not a whole lot of that. But, I mean, obviously, some of the big farm fields would be good, but I suspect a lot of those are in, and so might not be able to be developed anyway.
A lot of those are what?
They probably have land easements on them, that might prohibit development.
Well, it depends on, you know, that, that depends on whether solar farming is, is defined as agriculture.
No, it's not agriculture. No.
Got the word farming in it.
No.
I don't know, converting satellite to energy.
Right, it would depend on what the easement says.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's totally separate.
But most old easements did not anticipate this use of the land, so don't address it, therefore it's not.
So, Mark, is there a set of parameters that they use for defining if an area is, or location is good for solar, so basically, let's say you have, you go out and stand in a field, and you say, is this appropriate for solar, what are the parameters that they look at?
I mean, it's, it's what you expect, I mean, they're, they're looking for flat land that's already cleared, that's close to, you know, a substation or power lines, and that doesn't have, you know, trees shading it, that kind of thing, so it's pretty straightforward.
Hey, what about the, you know, where I live, I live in a valley. I look southeast, so I get daylight in the morning, and then the afternoon, everything's gone.
Yeah.
So do you look at terrain as far as?
Yeah, that, that would be informed from a shading perspective, yeah, you wanna obviously maximize.
And the reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering if it's, if there's a way of, you know, basically looking at the entire town and calculating the.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure someone could do that, some GIS skills.
Well, that's where I'm, I, I, I can do that, I'm just, I don't have parameters, and so, I guess, as I'm asking, is are there parameters in that, at least we can look at?
Well, I'm sure you could call revision, and like, what, you know, what, what's your screening mechanism? And then the Sustainability Group, they went through and, you know, looked, looked at a whole bunch of different things. Eric Firstenberg, you know, he's feeling like it's, it's pretty promising for his property, he's got beautiful southern exposure. And going up the, you know, kind of the Grand Fork Valley, I mean, there's a lot of people on the north side of that, of Dorchester Road that have big open hillsides, and, you know, they look pretty good.
Just, just in case it might be helpful to have an idea of where it would be appropriate, or where, not appropriate, but where there's a possibility, and that it would be, you know, we know on the backside of the, the north facing slopes are probably not.
Right, but like Michael Whitman's, the Coplins have that big long driveway, and this, you know, they have an open area that could all be filled with, with.
Whipple Hill on that backside.
Yep.
All in there.
Yep, yep, I mean, there's, there's a lot of southern aspect property.
Baker Hill, as you get, you know, between Baker Hill and Pyco, in that area right in there.
Well, what if all the Nichols Christmas trees, like, you know, up East Street or whatever, you know, right in the Skunkalo area was, you could be all solar panels, all, you know. all, you know, actually both sides of the road. A lot of open land there that are all Christmas trees.
So, what, what's up? Did, did we establish that everybody is comfortable with five acres? Or is that, did we not establish that?
Are you thinking that would be the maximum?
Yeah.
You're going from fifteen hundred feet?
Well, I don't know, we may have, we may have the medium. We, we're just jumping from the small to large, we could have a medium as well.
So, John, five acres, so if we measured just the panels and not the space in between, so if you have five acres of panels, you could actually have eight acres of.
It might cover ten acres, yeah.
Yes, yes.
And just so long as we're aware.
That, that just seems like way too big to me.
Well, I mean.
So what?
I'm with you.
Yeah.
Where are we then?
I don't know.
One acre is, one acre too small, I mean, you know, how does?
Well, that's what we're, that's the job.
I know.
I don't know whether you read the, the job description, but that's the job.
Well, that's why we have a bunch of people sitting out.
Right, that's why we have different people.
And that's why we're not accepting Keen's, it's like, oh yeah, let's put that into the.
Right, because this isn't keen.
Right.
Um, but it's very helpful to have there.
Well, Keen also has a lot of that area around it that's open, right?
Uh, Mark?
I mean, the zoning regs already have this two percent limit, right, or twenty-six thousand square feet? So, like, what?
Well, but then that, that's, we're already past that, so.
So, so five acres is the amount?
I mean, if we stick to what we have, then, then the maximum size would be a half an acre.
Okay, so you're talking about going beyond that?
Yeah, so we're talking about, we're talking about basically a carve-out.
Yeah.
And the question is how big that carve-out should be. If, if we're talking about measuring it the way it's gonna be the equivalent of a, you know, it's gonna be a ten acre coverage, I think, I, I don't know where I come down, but if I think about how big some of these things could be, I get uncomfortable. So, I don't know, I don't have an answer. But, I think with five acres where it's really gonna be ten acres, no.
Do you want to know one acres?
Well, one acre is, is twice what we can have now, that would be two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Do we have a sense, Mark, do you have a sense as to what size is commercially viable for the Norwich solars of the world? And, you know, these other folks, people that come in and, and build solar panels and lease people's properties?
Yeah, um, in Maine, for example, there, there are a couple of, you know, professional developers that do big wind projects, big solar projects, and they're, they're going down as small as maybe four to five megawatts. So, you know, it is possible to get a, you know, a real developer interested in a system that's small. It sort of depends on, you know, what the compensation mechanism is, like what, what, how much they can get paid for building a project like that. And here in New Hampshire, it's not, I mean, unless it's like a group net metering situation that is kind of structured more like a commercial project, you're probably not gonna have, you know, a great return on, on a project that's small. So, it, it, I guess what I'm saying is it kind of depends on, depends on the contractual agreement more or less.
So, so this one that was in Norwich and Randolph.
This is a five hundred kilowatt, and we estimated, somebody estimated it would be about two acres.
Yeah, but, I mean, Vermont's a different situation. It's like much easier and more lucrative to build solar over there than in New Hampshire.
Okay.
Why is that?
Just, they just support it more, incentives are better, just the arrangements.
So, there's government subsidies, basically.
Well, I wondered, John, I know, I know you said it's confused, it may be confusing to measure or have a difference of measurement between the small and the medium and large, but it just seems like it would be so much easier for the medium and the large to say the total amount of land taken up would be five acres, or whatever it is. You know, instead of, instead of worrying about, well, you have five acres of actual panels, but then it could be how big, you know, it just seems like it's so much easier to do it that way for the bigger, bigger system.
That's why, yeah, that's why there was that suggestion.
And then, so you're saying to somebody, okay, you can use five acres, and you can put your, as many panels as you want on five acres.
And just, if you guys are worried about impervious surfaces, then, then that approach may not be great because that might incentivize somebody to just cover the, you know, the complete five acres, completely covered with, with panels, which, from a water perspective, is probably not what you want.
That's why, that's why I like the thing in Keen's where they have requirements for, there has to be as, as much distance in between each row as a panel.
Right.
And we could certainly do that, and, and it almost makes sense, if we're jumping away from the twenty-six thousand square feet, maybe that's justification for just saying, hey, whatever your plot is that is gonna be taken up by this, it can only be five acres, or.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. But then, Mark, Mark is saying that it might incentivize somebody to.
Well, not, but not if, not if we have the requirement.
We, we could have some requirements with that.
We have a requirement.
Some of the view requirements, yeah.
Yeah, but if we're talking about disturbed area, we're requiring them to have more disturbed area or more area taken out of forest use. Or, you know, if we require them to have spacing in between their rows of arrays. So, I think that that could have unintended consequences.
Well, no, because, I don't think so, because we're, whatever our maximum acreage is, we're saying that's the maximum you can disturb. So, they can't use more than that. We're just saying within that disturbance, you have to have these, this.
Okay, so you're going to disturbance now and not structural coverage?
It's the same thing.
No, it's not.
Well, okay, then let me put it a different way. The, I'm going to the coverage, which is, let's just say.
Coverage is what's built at the end, disturbance is what happens during this.
The five acres, you are allowed, we're already getting away from the current zoning because twenty-six thousand square feet is, so, let's just say we're changing that coverage to whether it's, as David was suggesting, one acre or five acres, whatever you wanna use. You're not gonna have more disturbance than on, through, you were talking about disturbance in that context. Not gonna have more because that's as much as you could, could use. So, requiring the rows in between isn't going to incentivize any disturbance within that lot coverage.
If you're, well, if you're, if you have a forested site and you've got a plan for.
So, let's, let's go with the.
Rows, you know, space in between, that's gonna necessarily push your, your constructed things up further.
Here is.
But I, I, I kind of like the whole idea about, they know how distant the, you know, the arrays need to be sited, and it costs money to, you know, disturb more area. These people are in this to make money, not, you know.
But, but it's, I, I don't see that it's gonna disturb more area. So, maybe you could explain to me why. So, here, here, whatever the size is, let's say this is our maximum limit.
But, but we've been saying that that's our maximum limit for the structural, for the amount of panels you can.
So, let's say, well, then, let's do this exercise.
No, they're saying, I think, that, that is the maximum.
Let's say it's that you, you get five acres to play with, not, not your, not based on the size of the panels. Let's just try this exercise.
Okay.
So, are the one acres, the, the one acre, five acres, whatever it is, three acres, a hundred acres?
Yep.
So.
If you're gonna develop a large array, you can disturb no more than one acre or five acres.
Right, so, and if, if we're requiring a row in between, you know.
And what if this isn't flat?
Well, what the, what Keen says is that, it, you, it's, whether it's flat or not, you need the space of the measurement of, the rows have to be the equivalent to the, to the measurement of the panels. So, if this is a panel, then this is the row.
Right, right.
And, and I, what I would do is bring in an outside linebacker from here.
Well, I would like to talk to somebody about whether or not that makes sense.
Okay.
And what the result is, because it seems like it's like sprawl, you know?
Sprawl, I think it's the opposite.
Okay, well.
I mean, to me, what, what Mark, you know, mentioned before is, is the problem with incentivizing cramming stuff in so that you have, I mean, they, they are gonna need some space, as you were pointing out. But I don't wanna end up incentivizing minimizing the space in between.
And you could always, if you're, get further back from your, your panels, just start raising them up on a structure, and, you know, it's all of a sudden, instead of having panels flat on the ground, you squeeze them together, but raise up the ones as you're going back to, to make up for the fact that you're pushing them together, so.
First, Keen has a maximum of fifteen feet of height.
Right, well, that, again, that's, that's what they're trying to prevent.
Yeah, so, maybe on the large arrays, we, we should have a height limit.
We're, we're educating ourselves the hard way here.
Yeah.
Would it help to have somebody from revision come in or some installer and tell us what the best practices are?
You know, I think it, it would, it probably would be, you know, with the proviso that you were probably getting a, a, a best, best-case scenario.
Well, sure, but I mean, they could tell us, oh yeah, in fact, you know, they go in, I believe they go in actually at thirty-five degrees, and.
It'd be, it would be, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be good to get somebody who knows what they're talking about, and we can, you know.
I mean, certainly factor in any biases that we expect we have. But, I mean, they, when they say, we install, like, you know, a panel goes in like this, and the spacing between rows is whatever.
But then again, you know, if it's revision, then maybe solar reflect, you know, does something different, you know? Or they, do they all, there's not a standard.
Well, I mean, the laws of physics, as far as this panel not shading this panel, those, those are, that's laws of physics, that, that, I don't expect there to be a great deal of variation there.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I'd be fine with having somebody come in and educate us. And, but I, I don't think we're gonna get them in time for a town meeting.
That's right, that, I just remembered. That's not that far away.
No, we have one more meeting. So, and again, we, I think it's fine for feedback. In fact, maybe it's even better if we have a general thing. You know, one acres, three acres, five acres, tell people right now it's, it would be, under current zoning, could be a half acre, but we're thinking of enlarging it to this. And people can, that'll elicit comments.
Yep.
And the thing I'm, I'm really curious about is I don't think there's, I don't think there's much disarray on, on this board about the smaller stuff. But when we get into the larger stuff, I'm, I really don't know what the town's.
Right.
Attitude is, you know, or, or, I know that, 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 that thing passed, you know, like unanimously, but I don't know when, when, when push comes to shove, what people's tolerance level is.
I think, there again, I think it all depends where it is.
As long as it's not next to your house, it's, everybody's gonna like it.
And that's, that's exactly what this article.
Well, I think, you know, especially, the other thing you have to look at, I think a lot of people say anything along the Route Ten corridor. You know, that's typically the, the scenic views of Lime that everyone sees, and so.
It's, it's also one of the best places for solar.
Absolutely, and, you know, River Road, again, another area that there's some.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, River Road should be covered with nuclear plants.
Well, I mean, you can go down further south than you, down Wilmont Way. You have some very large open fields that have, you know.
They don't have three-phase, do they?
They don't have three-phase down there, but.
Is there a three-phase to Stanhope sole place, the?
They might run a three-phase down in the head over side.
Yeah, well, to, just to the Stanhope, which isn't far from Lime Boundary.
No, you, you look at that flat area by Wilmont Way, you're only talking about a mile.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a tough mile, but anyway.
Yeah, it's all gonna slide into the river.
What I wanted to make was, Mark said that probably the smaller commercial investments are, you know, four megawatt, which is, you know, fifteen acres.
Yep.
So, I mean, the way that we're talking about somewhere between one and five, we're probably not gonna get a investor. And, and we're not in Vermont, remember, we're in New Hampshire. So, it sounds like we might be arguing over something that it doesn't really matter anyway.
Those are the current conditions, we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Right, well.
Those are, those are current.
And we won't know what's gonna happen until we get one and we say that, that, you know, we did really badly, or we did okay in terms of limiting.
Well, that's, that's why it's a good idea to, you know, consider everything that we can.
Yeah, conditional use is important, that would be an important part of it.
It's, no, the important part is making it possible, that's.
Making, making what possible?
Making, developing whatever we call large, a possibility here. Otherwise, we shouldn't even be like worrying about it. If we only want, all we want is small, let's just leave it at that.
So, I mean, from what you're saying, you're saying that, you know, fifteen or twenty acres is, is the minimum?
Well, I'm just basing what, what Mark said about, you know, being over in Maine and, and the smallest ones were four, and, which is probably about fifteen acres. So, we may be designing for something that's never gonna be commercially viable, and, so maybe we shouldn't waste a whole bunch of time talking about it.
I mean, I, I think that would be short-sighted because we need to give guidance to people who wanna have bigger than.
Well, that was the feedback we got, was that we wanted to be able to have bigger systems, you know, here in town, but.
And I think the issue that none of us really knows is what, where do people in town come down on this?
Well, I mean, this is where I think we're exactly right to be thinking, what can we say at little town meeting?
At little town meeting, I think, well, we can, we can have a handout, or, people can pick up, and, and we can say, you know, we're looking at anywhere from one to, up to whatever, the moon, and.
Well, no, we're not really, maybe.
Well, if we're saying twenty acres, and.
I don't think we're saying twenty acres, but I'm just saying that, that we, you know, I don't think anybody here feels comfortable with twenty acres, so I don't think we're saying.
Okay, 'cause I don't.
Not even I'm advocating twenty acres.
No.
Okay, 'cause I thought that's, you were saying fifteen acre moon.
What I'm pointing out, it's, it's, you know, what I'm pointing out is that what we're talking about in terms of a, a project may not be financially feasible with the size that we have.
It may not be, but, but we, we don't know that, and we don't know how things will change. So, we're creating, you know, my, my point of view is, are we gonna say, oh, you're, you can only build up, what did we say the limit was for the small?
Fifteen, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so.
Or it's like fifteen hundred.
So, are, are we saying, oh, that's it? No, we have to, you know, we, we have to address it.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, unless people wanna say that, I, I, I don't think that's what we were saying.
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting to find out what. I suspect you may get people in town who, who feel exactly that way, who feel like, oh, you know, build a unit on the property for your house, but I don't wanna see farm fields covered with solar panels.
That may be, that may be, that's what we need to find out.
Right, right. Do we know enough to start to write an outline?
I would, I would suggest take the usual, you know, exercise where.
Take ten minutes and.
Let's, let's, let's say that we're, with the small, how would we summarize the smaller, what we're saying with the, with the small, we're saying fifteen hundred.
And that's just gonna be measuring the panel size.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
And are we measuring seventy percent or flat?
I think we came around flat.
Flat, yes.
Okay, so.
I wouldn't do that, I mean, that just gets back to the impervious point. I mean, if you're measuring it flat, then there's, there's really not much incentive for anyone to tilt it all that much, other than, you know, the actual angle, you know, being, being perpendicular to the sun. But, I mean, you might have someone who comes in and just, you know, puts in like a basketball court covered with solar panels.
What do, what do people think about that? I'm not really worried about that, I mean, you, you'd lose a lot of efficiency.
Yes and no, I mean, it's, 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 yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, you'd be surprised at what some people will do to fit as much capacity as they can into a given area. to fit as much capacity as they can into a given area.
Well, we're allowing them, if we measure, you know, if you have a three-by-five panel, I don't know what they really are, but if you have a three-by-five panel, we, you can have fifteen hundred square feet of three-by-five panels, you can tip them at any angle you like.
Right, right, but if you, like, once you start tipping them, then, then you introduce more of the shading aspect, and so that's gonna limit the amount of capacity you could put in, and so if you, if you wanna put in a lot of capacity, you're gonna lay them flat, and then you run into the, you know, the water issues, I think.
I don't think, I don't think we're.
I don't think they're saying that it has to be contiguous, so you can do rows of panels tilted. All of the panels together can't exceed fifteen hundred square feet, so you could put in six rows.
Right, but it's a question of how you're measuring the panel area, I think what you're settling on now is just, you know, length times width, as opposed to the drip edge issue.
So, so, so I think, I think this is a very generous standard, so I think what we're saying is, if, let's say the panels are three-by-five, they're not, but pretend they are, so it's, each panel is fifteen hundred square, is fifteen square feet. If you can have fifteen hundred total square feet, you can have a hundred panels. Then you can mount them at any angle you want.
But I, I thought what Mark, what you were saying was that, was the concern that there would be people who would wanna do precisely what somebody said, which is, you know, just pack it in there.
Yeah, or, or, I mean, based on what Rich just said, I mean, you could take that fifteen hundred, you could take those a hundred panels and spread them over fifteen acres if you want, right? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, the way you've defined that.
So it should be contiguous, I guess.
Right, and then if it's contiguous, then you run into the issue where, you know, some people might do them flat, and then you've got this big impervious surface, which, I don't know, maybe that's fine.
Why would they do them flat, though?
It's only fifteen hundred square feet at any time.
They aren't as efficient flat, are they?
They, they, yeah, they're not gonna be as efficient, but, you know, there may be applications where you want more capacity, like, you know, if you're only interested in the sun between ten and two, it's mostly overhead anyway, and so, you know, it's, it's the same issue where, like, you don't get much solar production in the winter, and so if you're snowed in, who cares? It can, it can come down to that in some cases.
Boy, I don't think anybody's gonna be spending fifteen hundred square feet of solar panels not to squeeze most of the efficiency out of them. So.
Well, it depends on the consumer, yeah, right, so, oh, we can say this amount of system, and, you know, and, and, you know, they're, they're, you know.
All right, so, so, look, let's remember, we're not at the final stage here. So, just in terms of an outline, we can say, we can have an introduction or asterix and saying that, you know, how we're gonna measure this isn't nailed down, but, but just roughly, we're talking about, I'm forgetting, fifteen, was it fifteen?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, a square foot of, are we saying contiguous lot coverage, or are we just saying any, anywhere on your site?
I think you can't say contiguous, because if you're trying to do rows, you know, okay, you're.
You know, if you're using solar reflect systems, then you've got these discrete.
Right, okay, so it's just coverage?
A quick thing, if I took thirty percent of fifteen hundred, so let's say you are measuring it, so you say seventy percent at an angle.
Yep.
So you're, you would gain thirty percent more area.
You'd be at.
Four hundred and fifty, an additional four hundred and fifty square feet.
So essentially, you'd be at two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Of actual disturbance.
No, of actual panel.
Of actual panels.
Oh, wait.
Okay, all right.
Cause I'm saying, if you're going, say, you're measuring it at an angle.
Yep.
Then you're, you know, you're saying seventy percent of this, you know, it doesn't matter what angle it is, you're just gonna take the seventy percent as proposed with the last thing, so seventy percent, so that means you're going to gain thirty percent more over the.
So the fifteen hundred would be, become almost two thousand.
So, when you measure it at an angle, you, when you measure the surface area covered rather than the square, the surface area of the panels, what do you do with the systems that track the sun?
That was the, the original, well, right now, with no guidance, I measure the, the panel at its worst-case scenario.
So, which is flat, so.
But the, the board had said, in the, for the last provision, that the idea was that you would say seventy percent, cause that would account for.
You're taking an average, basically.
Taking an average, but that would give you, like I said, fifteen hundred square feet, it would give you an additional four hundred and fifty.
But, but, I mean, actually, the way we wrote that was that that would apply to ground-mounted tracking systems, not to anything.
That's right, yes.
So this is, this is a, seventy, seventy percent for everything, kinda doesn't.
Well, again, it depends on, you know, I just, I use the seventy percent, cause I don't have the exact angle.
But, no, I think that's a really good point, I think that we need to deal with that, what are we saying?
So I, so I, I'm now confused, I had thought we were just saying, you can have fifteen hundred square feet of panels.
Flat panels.
I thought, I think that's what we were, wasn't that what we were?
And then you can mount them at any angle you want.
Yeah, that is what we were saying.
That is what we were saying.
All right, and then it covers as much space as is prudent, because you don't want this panel shading that one, so you have to.
We're not, we're not weighing in on it.
That's right, that's right, okay, good.
If what you said instead was, you can have fifteen hundred square feet of panel, and we're not measuring the surface area of the panel, we're measuring the ground that it covers, that effectively takes you up to about two thousand square feet of solar panel, and that's about a thirty kilowatt system, which is, I think, bigger than we thought.
Yeah, but I didn't think we were doing that, neither.
I didn't think so, but Mark, you were.
That's what Mark was suggesting.
Suggesting and doing it, and so I just wanted to give a, you know, kind of a.
Well, I mean, that's what you guys had in the original amendment, and.
And we had that relating, we had the seventy percent thing relating to ground-mounted trackers.
Right, but the other, and the other one was basically.
The drip edge.
The other was the drip edge.
And it was based on whatever the angle was decided on by the.
That you, that you, you basically made a commitment to your angle, I guess.
Right.
But whatever that was, it was the drip line, it, it was, we distinguished between trackers and non-trackers.
Right, and, and I think now we're proposing, let's get rid of the drip line definition, and just say.
I think that's where we have been.
Yes, okay, all right.
Mark is objective in that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, again, it just.
No, I think that's good to hear from you.
It just seems inconsistent with what you're doing with buildings, I mean, maybe that's fine, but it, you know, I think you're, kinda your underlying.
You mean the structural, I mean, the structure thing.
Yeah, yeah, the whole, the roof thing, yeah, like if you're so.
But I think, Mark, with buildings, it's only the footprint, the roof is irrelevant, it's just the footprint of the building, and.
Yeah, but if you think about, like, a building that would have, like, let's just say, a solar roof, right? I think what, I think what you guys are now saying is, you look at the actual dimensions of that roof rather than the footprint of the roof.
Yes.
That's right, for purposes of deciding whether it's small or medium, and, or large, and requires additional regulatory approval.
So, okay, so let's, let's think about that for a second, so what we were saying before is that we, and correct me if I'm wrong, we really didn't care about the roof, because you already have the lot coverage of the base.
Right, and that's not what I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, it seems like your underlying premise is, you're treating solar like any other structure, but in this case, you're not, and I was just pointing at.
Well, we, we already, yeah, I mean, that's true, and, and because we're, we moved, I mean, one of the things in your, your email, that was, you know, the commercial versus non-commercial, one of the, one of the things that appeals to me about this approach is, maybe we'll, we'll end up in that baleen wick anyway, but, is that we're doing by size, it's not by use, and that has a lot of advantages. If we're gonna have over twenty-six thousand square feet as a, as the upper limit, we're already doing a carve-out. I mean, what it's looking like is, we're doing a carve-out for solar, that's different than, we're not treating them like any other structure. We're, we're giving them more leeway, at least the way I'm hearing it, than, than other structures.
Yeah, but, that's, that's true, and I think that's good, but I mean, the vast majority of systems are gonna fall below that twenty-six thousand square feet threshold, I would assume, and so.
I, I would guess so too, but I don't, I, who knows?
And so in that case, you know, townspeople might ask, why are you regulating solar any differently from any other structure in that case?
You mean that they'd be, they'd be upset about that?
Possibly.
They might be, well, then we would, if, if the town, I mean, that's what we wanna know.
Right.
I mean, realistically, we've had, I mean, the best, the best input we had was that last meeting, we've had, you know, great input from the Energy Committee, and we had, we had some input from, like, you know, a few people who weren't on the Energy Committee, which is, you know, just not enough. If we can elicit a large, large feedback, that's really what we, what we gotta know. So, I think whatever we, we give to people at the, at town meeting is gonna be necessarily flawed, but we'll get maybe a better sense from the feedback.
Yep.
I mean, I don't mind if people, if people say, are you, you know, this is terrible, because that, we wanna know.
Well, no.
No, I mean, really, how else are we gonna know?
Yep.
It just seems like you have a very defensible position if you say, we're gonna regulate solar like any other structure, yet in this case, you're, you're not, because you're, because of the way you're measuring the panel.
Well, that panel measurement, though, is only for purposes of deciding which category of solar system you're in. We're just saying, if, if it's a small system, then there's not any additional requirements, but if it's a big system, then we're gonna have additional oversight.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I mean, we'll, I guess we'll have to hammer down exactly the measurement criteria, but essentially, that, I think that's what we're after, is, look, you can do this up to this size, and you don't need to go through any song and dance. And above this, you do.
So, I wondered, um, does anybody know where the three-phase power runs through town?
As far as I know, it comes in across East Bedford, comes up along the East Bedford Road, through the center of town, and out to Dorchester Road, right to the skiway, and that's the only.
So that's the only way.
Does it not run south?
I don't believe it runs south.
Cause there are three conductors up there on the, on the poles, running south of town.
Okay, so they may have run it.
Well, and doesn't Cross, Crossroads doesn't use all theirs, right, so they must sell to somebody, so.
I'm not sure where their, um, yeah, there's some big conductors that go up through Route ten, so they may run it, run it down Route ten also. I might have to look into that, too.
Can you check on those, is there an easy way to do that?
Not really, I, you know, I can talk to, I try to talk to Eversource, but they don't like giving out information about their network.
I understand, because it's sensitive, but, you know, in terms of our planning, um.
If you can count the wires on the poles.
Yeah, well, that's the easy one, sometimes.
Okay, so we're getting close to quarter to nine, are we, are we getting?
I want people to think about where larger installations would be allowed, and.
Where it's possible.
Well, and also, I mean, I, I, my, my personal feeling is that it is not appropriate for Mountain and Forest District, and looking at East Lyme, that's not so great either, you know, what if the whole ski, what if, everything that's wooded at the skiway were denuded, and they put up solar panels, and you just had ski trails in between the solar panels?
That'd be beautiful.
I mean, no, I'm just.
That'd be a good reflection on the town.
No, well, you know, but I'm just, you know, let's.
No, of course, I, I agree, I, I agree with you, Vicky, I think.
I wouldn't want it, because I, over unfairly, I look at the skiway.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I look from Sunday Mountain in Orford down to the.
Oh, wow.
So, look.
But just, I think we need to think about.
I think we're not gonna get an outline done tonight, so.
No, no, but.
Why don't, once again, everybody draw up an outline?
Okay.
And then, we, we really need to, as imperfect as it may be, we need to commit to something to get to the, to the town.
So what we should do is get it to David next week, so he can get them out to us, so that we have a little time, I can't, like, if I get it on Tuesday night, it's really hard.
Okay, so, so, let's, when, when would be a reasonable time for us to get?
Next Thursday?
Yeah, next Thursday would be fine, during the day, I won't have zoning board next week, so.
Okay.
And next Thursday is a lot of light, do you really think it would be?
We're gonna, we're gonna send outlines to David, and David will then send them out to all of us, don't have a conversation online. And then, when we get each other's outlines, we, we might wanna incorporate them, and then we come in and.
I wonder if we could use, I mean, if we had them all the same, like, you know, size, commercial, you know, zoning districts, and follow the thought process that was here?
If, if we had another half an hour, we could probably do that, but.
Well, no, I think, Vicky, what you're suggesting is that we follow something like that.
Follow this outline.
Okay, I will forward this to everyone in the next few minutes.
Okay.
Which one is that?
That's.
Your note, the note.
The notes that I produced, I mean, just as a general format.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not the format I'd like to see the outline presented in, but it's just, if we all did it the same, then, you know, it might be easier to review.
Okay.
Yeah.
One thing we didn't get to, which seems to be a concern to me, at least to me, is this decommissioning issue.
Oh, it's a big concern to me as well.
Especially, mainly not with the residential, smaller systems, but with the.
The big one, absolutely.
These things are gonna be packed with hazardous waste, they're, it really, it seems to me that there has to be some sort of a reserve maintained or something, so we don't.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's.
We talked about that, Aaron, some community quite a bit.
Well, what do we have for telecommunications systems, does it think we would have that in our regulations?
And isn't the wind, doesn't wind?
Your wind also has.
So whatever they have, we should just have the exact same.
Well, not, I mean, let's, let's look.
Let's look at those and see if they're appropriate.
Like, I think Keane has a good.
Yeah, we need to have decommissioning.
All right.
Can someone circulate the Keane ordinance?
Oh, I thought you should.
I thought I had sent it out to you.
Could you send?
I'm sure I forwarded it to you last, oh, maybe.
Actually, I got it a while ago.
Anyway, please resend it, please.
Send it again, yes, thank you. No electrons, we're harmed.
And, and I think we still had some concerns about the, the Village District, you know, for these small systems that everywhere, except for in, in the two Village areas.
Yeah, people, some people, well, I think that's, I think we should.
What do you mean by the Village areas, what are those areas?
The Lime Common District and the Lime, Lime Center.
I don't know, if I were one of those people, I would be kind of ripped, angry if I couldn't put solar on, I mean, you're, you're talking about just ground mounts?
Well, I don't know.
Or, but, you know.
No, the, I think the issue was that it, it came up, and we should discuss it, so you can put your thoughts.
They're gonna be angry if they can't put it in, and they're gonna be angry if their neighbors can put it.
Well, that's, yeah, welcome to Earth.
There you go, you got it, you're right.
So, yeah, I mean, any, any opinions you have, put them in your, put them in your outline, because your vote matters.
The other thing we haven't discussed is the overlay district, which we talked about, that some community, whether, whether there's some places in, in wetlands or whatever, that would be really appropriate for solar.
Well, the Hanover Wetlands are.
No, no, that's totally inappropriate, and I, I, you know, it's embarrassing to say, but it was like.
It's your fault, Vicky, your fault.
No, it's not, I had nothing, I, I, I couldn't, I could not.
I know, I asked you that question, because I was sure you were gonna say, oh, it was an abandoned lot, and then.
Well, but I'm just saying, there may be places in town where it would be really a good place for solar.
No, it wouldn't.
Yeah, and the float, the floating post pond.
No, not, well, okay, let's not say wetlands, let's say deeper slopes or something.
Steep slopes are terrible.
Or some of the local ag land, maybe.
Okay, okay.
Floating on the river.
Well, that's fine with me.
That's tunes.
Post pond.
Actually, there are floating, seriously, there are floating, so mostly on reservoirs, but not on, you know, on town-owned bodies of water. Throughout the country, there are floating solar.
So I just forwarded everybody the Keane and the notes from.
Oh, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, all right, everybody, thank you for coming, and much appreciated.
Well, the conversation is only getting more interesting.
Take care, Mark, thanks for coming.
We learn, we learn more and more.
We learn more and more of what we don't know.